Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Regular Meeting, the City of Pasco Council Regular Meeting on this February 5th. The council thanks you for being a part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. The meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And there are agendas back here to my right as you enter the door on that table there. So with that, Ms. Clerk, can you please provide us a roll call?
Council members Blaisdell.
President.
Barajas.
President.
Grim.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Paralis.
Present.
Mayor Proten Milne.
Here.
And Mayor Serrano.
Present. Sounds like we are all here. If you will all please stand and join me with, uh, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. And with that, we will roll on to item number four, which is consent agenda. And all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call mode as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. With that, we have item number A, which is approval of meeting minutes for January 16th and January 22nd. Item, uh, letter B, bills and communications approving the claims in the total amount of eight million, five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, five hundred twenty-five thousand and twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Item number C, resolution number 4417, bid award for Sylvester Street Safety Improvements Project. Item letter D, resolution number 4418, Architects West Inc., Professional Services Agreement for Services for the Martin Luther King Community Center Remodel and Expansion Project. Do we have any discussion or any requests to remove any of these items? Hearing none, Mr. Milne.
Yeah, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Hearing first and second, Ms. Roll, uh, Ms. Clerk.
All right, Councilmember Barajas.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grim.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Paralis.
Yes.
Mayor Proten Milne.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
Yes.
Great, that is unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Moving on to item number five, we have proclamations and acknowledgements. We do have one tonight, which is proclaiming February 2024 as Black History Month. Uh, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add, or you want me to roll into that? Alrighty, with that, um, I will say that, uh, I'll read some of this proclamation, and we've asked former council member Irving Brown Senior to accept this, but if you have anyone else that you would like to accept along with you, certainly feel free to come up to the podium and I'll present it accordingly. And then, uh, we may want to take a five-minute break, three-minute break, uh, let's do five after in case we have any pictures, okay? So with that, whereas in nineteen, Mr. Brown, will you come up to the podium, please? Thank you, my friend. You can hand off the phone if you'd like. And I apologize for not getting the blue shoe memo, I almost went there.
I got you.
Yeah, I'm glad you stepped up your game. I didn't wear the blazer because I didn't want to outshine you, man.
It's okay, I got you.
Uh, just in case anyone doesn't see the back and forth, I appreciated the time that I had with Mr. Brown, he's a good friend.
As well, thank you.
So I'm very honored to present this to you, man. So I will read through it and get to the formalities, then we can chit each other a little more.
Sounds like a plan, it gives me a few minutes to catch up.
Perfect, really. Whereas in 1926, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History sponsored a National History Week to celebrate and promote achievements by Black Americans and other peoples of African descent, which inspired schools and communities nationwide to organize local celebrations, establish history clubs, and host performances and lectures. In the decades that followed, many college campuses began recognizing Black History Month. And whereas in 1976, President Gerald Ford officially recognized Black History Month and called upon the public to seize the opportunity to honor the too oft neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. And whereas since 1976, during the month of February, our nation takes pause to reflect on the injustices faced by African-Americans throughout our nation's history and in an allyship, celebrate the accomplishments and cultural influence of African-Americans. And whereas, the City of Pasco recognizes the history of segregation in the 1950s and the pivotal demonstrations organized by local civil rights leaders in the 1960s that led to successes in society for the Black community and in process have deeply enriched, and in the process have deeply enriched Pasco's history with culture, skill, and service. And whereas, the 2024 theme, African-Americans and the Arts pays tribute to the African-American artists in the fields of visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression. Now, therefore, I Pete Serrano, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, to hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month. Mr. Brown, if you've got any comments, or again, if you've got anyone invited up.
Yeah, there's a few, like I said, thank you, uh, Mayor Serrano, and then to the council. Um, thank you for this grand opportunity, um, I don't take it lightly, even on behalf of my African-American community, just to be recognized and to be seen is huge. And for every community should speak very loud and be proud of their culture and where they're from. And to be recognized as such, even though we've done proclamations in the past, this is a call to action for our community, and you're now a part of that, so I appreciate that. And like I said, I had a whole speech written, so you guys are off the hook tonight, you don't have to get the whole hit, but, um, I'm gonna free, I'm gonna free willy this, and I think it's gonna be from my heart. Uh, but I did ask a lot of the community members and leaderships from different African-American organizations that have propelled forward, um, in spite of what it may look like. They are leaders, they are directors, they are business owners, they are educated, um, community members who have been giving back to this community for many, many, many years. And there's a few of them here before my birth, we won't do that tonight, but I'm just, uh, stand to be proud and privileged, and thank you for this opportunity and the photo ops that'll come later, so I'll ask if you all would stand, I would, um, this is them that are, are out tonight and supported this proclamation, if you would stand as a community, um, I would appreciate it. Um, and they all came out tonight to just support, yes, they absolutely do need a round of applause, and I want to tell them, thank you for standing with me, because I'll tell you, together we stand, divided we fall. So again, to the City of Pasco, which I love very much, you guys will continue to keep hearing that. Um, again, we appreciate it, but just a little bit, I wanted to go back to the reason or the focus to Black History Month. Uh, Mayor Serrano, you nailed it, you hit it, but in what I was looking at, bringing it together, Black History Month was created to focus, a very intentional word, um, attention on the contributions of African-Americans to the United States. It honors all Black people from all periods of the US history, from the enslaved people first brought over from Africa in the early 17th century to African-Americans currently living in the United States and now in our very own community. So again, the historical information is pertinent to how we get to know each other, do business together, raise our children together as, as one grand community and an awesome city. So again, as I stand today, very proud, even as a former city council member, this is a great move, uh, forward. Um, again, we appreciate it, um, and we look to be more present as a community. So make those calls and get us to work. Um, and again, to the city manager, Mr. Lincoln, to the staff, um, the Pasco staff, all that was included in making this decision to even have me come out and receive it on behalf of, I am in great gratitude and great debt to the City of Pasco for this recognition. I'm so blessed to be here, and to you council members, each and every one of you, God bless you as you continue making such decisions as tonight, to make everyone included and feel, and feel that they have an inclusive presence. So God bless you, and we continue to do great things together, and I believe there is a photo op opportunity?
Absolutely, my friend.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. So it is 7:15 and we are back. Um, again, thanks for everybody who's attended, thanks for everybody who's willing to take their pictures, and Irving, it's always a pleasure seeing you. I do want to note that, um, for those in audience, we do have a screen, uh, with a list of the various activities that are happening throughout this month to celebrate Black History. I believe that's visible also for those out in TV land, et cetera. Um, you know, the Mid-Columbia Library has an event on the 15th from 7 to 8 p.m. Um, Richland Public Library also has one February 8th, so that's coming up this week. Uh, and then CBC has a presentation, it looks like tomorrow, from 1 to 2:30, which is titled, What Does Trauma Look Like Today for Members of Historically Oppressed Groups? Those various activities are not hosted by the City of Pasco, but we do want to make sure that the community is aware, um, because they are ongoing in our community, so for the MCL, the Mid-Columbia Library's presentation, check out their website, Richland likewise, and then CBC, again, if you're interested in attending that, are available tomorrow, um, to CBC's website. With that, again, thank you, appreciate it, always appreciate you speaking from the heart, my friend. Moving on to item number six, we have public comment period. Now, this is an opportunity where the public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled hearing, a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express, express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate answer. Some questions require, uh, consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed at staff, members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes, which we have, our little countdown, and it does go, green, yellow, red, as your time allotment, uh, peaks. Uh, those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of a formal meeting. Lastly, when called upon, please, uh, state your name and, uh, just your county or city residence. And with that, Mr. Lincoln, do we have anyone signed in online to comment? Okay. With that, uh, any members of the public who have either signed up for comment or desire to leave a public comment? Uh, ma'am. And then push down the little speaker button, it's a little gray thing. There you go, you're good.
Okay, thanks. Uh, that was a really nice moment to be a part of, I just wanted to say that first, I'm glad I got to be here for that. Uh, my name's Abby Cameron, I'm a Richland resident, and I am the CEO of Three Rivers Community Foundation. Um, we are the local...
There you go.
We are the local community foundation that serves Benton and Franklin Counties, that's our geographical area that we serve. Our mission is to create opportunities for perpetual giving to support nonprofits now and into the future. We offer a variety of donor services, and we facilitate local philanthropy. We're similar to United Way and the Women Helping Women Organization Fund, but we are the most broad-based funder and the most local-based funder in our community. Through our donors, partners, and unrestricted funds, we distribute anywhere from 600,000 to a million dollars per year back to our nonprofit community. My goal tonight is to let the City of Pasco know that 3RCF could be a partner in distributing ARPA and state and local fiscal recovery funds. The City of Pasco has many important priorities to address: housing, public safety, transportation, behavioral health, among others. Uh, nonprofits and charitable organizations are skilled, are skilled at filling those gaps and increasing access for marginalized community members. 3RCF can administer, oversee, and report on the progress of funds used to address City of Pasco's priorities. 3RCF has the grant-making experience and oversight, and nonprofits have the passion and solutions. My understanding, and your, uh, staff experts would know more, is that funds need to be committed by year-end. Committing funds with 3RCF with direction and priorities from the city can extend the timeline, so funds are distributed in a thoughtful, effective way for maximum impact. Um, I want to thank Blanche Baraja, also 3RCF board member, for giving me the opportunity and the reminder to come, uh, share that information tonight, and I would very much look forward to working with you, um, on how we can partner for those solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional public comment tonight? Looks like you got whoever wants to race, gentleman in the tan jacket. If you can press down on the button at the base, there's a silver button at the base?
It's running down there.
It's okay, we'll restart it, don't worry about it.
What do you need, this button?
Uh, there you go, sir.
Is that it?
Yep.
My name's David Hanum, and, uh, I'm overloaded with topics, so I won't get through almost any of them, maybe a couple. Um, the first thing I like to do in these confusing times is to say one thing I wish all parties would get in their mind. We all heard about, give me liberty or give me death, somebody said that, anybody know who said that? Probably all do, somebody said that. I don't think it was Bill Gates, alright? So anyway, liberty is freedom based on morality. If you have freedom based on immorality, you're not gonna have any liberty. And that's the way we're going today, we're going down that route. We're gonna lose our liberty, face it. Look what's happened to us, safe and effective, 20 million people worldwide dead, okay? And there's more coming, look at Colorado. It's hard to say, Er-Ervebo vaccines, attenuated Ebola being injected into healthcare workers. They got a new bioweapons lab just down the street, okay? They keep cooking this stuff up. Now, if you look at the CDC's own paperwork, it says, in reference to that vaccine, if you take that vaccine, you have a 31% chance of shedding it on other people, so they get sick. Hey, it's time we have another shutdown, right? Isn't that what it's all about? That's what it was about the first time, and it isn't about virus. This is nonsense. This is about a whole change to the way we live and operate financially. It's a financial takeover. CBC, or what do they call it, CDC money, CBC, Central Bank currency, you know, that stuff is programmable, it's got a life. They will direct you what you can and can't buy. Your liberty is going to be zero under that system, and it has a shelf life, too, if you don't spend it fast enough to disappear. Now, before we run out of time, this is the flag my father had over his coffin. He was a service member who escorted General Patton down to make the speech of the Third Army. The man later on ran into some serious incidents and tried to report it, tell the truth, and he was put in a hospital and injected against his will with crap that affected the rest of his life until the day he died. And I was the second before he died, it was the last thing he's talking about, alright? So get ready. We are about to lose our liberty unless we get off this rotten page that we're on. Simple. One last comment for five seconds here. We have an invasion going in this country, and I'd like to know how much housing that we are building to bring in people from all these other countries that are invading the United States that aren't vetted.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
And they're ex-military men. And I will say, Oscar Peterson, I wish he would come up a little bit, you know, Oscar Peterson, there was a whole bunch of them back then.
Thank you very much.
Lionel Hampton, bring him up. If I could resurrect him from the dead, I'd love to bring him in.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Chamberlain, Bill Russell, it's too much to talk about that talent that was out there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I really love Oscar Peterson.
Do we have any additional comments? Sir, in the front. Oh, sorry, no, the other gentleman. Thank you. No, no, you, you, you with the Meadow shirt, thank you, sorry. Uh, until I get the names, it's you, sorry.
My name's John Lehman, and there's a packet that, um, I, I gave out, so you each should have that, and my comments refer to that packet. Ah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city staff. I appreciate you taking the time tonight to hear my proposal regarding an economic opportunity for Pasco. My name is John Lehman, I live in Rufus, Oregon, and I work for Meadow Outdoor Advertising. Meadow has been a member of the Pasco Chamber of Commerce for the past two to three years. I'm here tonight to talk to you briefly about a proposal to allow outdoor advertising, also known as billboards, in the City of Pasco. Meadow is a small, family-owned, outdoor advertising company with our operation based in the Dawes, Oregon. We've been operating billboards in Washington and Oregon since 1981, and we hear a demand for billboards in the Pasco community. We take pride in each of the communities where we do business. Billboard advertising helps businesses, especially small, local ones, they bring in customers and increase revenue, they really work. I've included a handout in your packets with more information that talks about billboards and how they help small, local businesses. Billboards are great for nonprofit organizations and public service messages. Every year Meadow donates thousands of dollars worth of public service advertising in the communities where we do business. I've included examples of artwork we've displayed, and these are just a small portion of what we have donated. There should be three sheets stapled with lots of, uh, nonprofit in there. Billboards also create income for landowners. We pay lease income to our landowners in order to install our signs on their property. This creates cash flow and helps maximize income for these property owners. We maintain our signs to be the best-looking in the world. Clean, single-pole support, well-designed artwork, there's a sheet in your packets that show, uh, structures that we operate in our different markets. I've included a proposal in your packets for changes to the sign code that would allow outdoor advertising in City of Pasco. Billboard-sized signs are already, billboard-sized signs are already allowed currently. These are very simple changes that could be easily implemented and would be very little work for the council. This is just one example of changes that could be made, there's other ways that would, could be discussed and decided upon. Thank you again for your time tonight considering this Meadow billboard proposal. We believe that outdoor advertising is a win-win for the community of Pasco and everyone involved. If the council would like to move forward with this proposal, I'd be happy to attend future workshops or work sessions to help make this happen. Thank you again for your time tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lehman. Um, unfortunately, this isn't the time where we typically take questions from council. I will note that, uh, did you leave any packets with staff or just provide adequate number for us?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I guess I'll offer this, uh, to the extent that this council is interested in this proposal, I think we'll get a general sense, uh, maybe at some point, whether it's miscellaneous discussion tonight or in the near future, and to that point, we appreciate your invitation to present further information. I will note that I have received your email before, so, uh, it didn't go unread, it didn't go, I just...
Oh, good.
Um, so it didn't, it went unresponded, but it went unread.
That's okay, just knowing that you got it.
Yeah, no, I did receive it, and so I appreciate you coming here, and with that, uh, again, I think the council will take it up as to whether or not this is something that we're going to make, you know, a priority or something to discuss, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I'm happy to help.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay.
Colin Hastings, Pasco Chamber of Commerce, Pasco resident. Um, I just wanted to follow, uh, John's, um, presentation and object to one thing that he said, and that is actually that Meadow has been a member for five years. So, uh, we appreciate, uh, their company's involvement, and, and I wanted to follow up a little bit, uh, because if you haven't noticed, Pasco Chamber has a billboard just north of town, it's not a billboard, it's a sign, but, um, that was a long process to get that going. We, in that process, was, were exploring, uh, different leasing options and, uh, other availability in Pasco, and, and quite, quite frankly, found it was, uh, extremely difficult to come to a resolution, even to find somebody that, uh, would have some space available for... even to find somebody that would have some space available for a long-term commitment, so on and so forth. Plus, the quality of the signs that we see that we do have in Pasco have been up for just as long as I've probably been in Pasco, which is my whole life. So I think there might be something to explore beyond this, with their help to revise into what that looks like, because I do notice a few of the billboard signs that are decrepit. And, you know, there could be improvement all the way around, but I think following their leadership from Meadow as well as really vouching for the fact that they've been involved with the Pasco Chamber, and as a matter of fact, made a nice donation to our nonprofit showcase as well too. So I think moving forward, we would definitely want to be hand-in-hand with them, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
Gentleman in the suit.
We all thought you were done. Am I on? Okay, cool. So my name is Matt Murphy, and I currently live in Kennewick. I am the new government and regional affairs director for the Tri-Cities Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to come in and I wanted to have an opportunity to meet all of you guys and eventually, hopefully, get a chance to sit down and talk to you guys about, you know, the goals and objectives legislatively for the city of Pasco and the entire Tri-Cities area. Because I think I, like I say, I work for the entire region, work closely with Colin. You know, we're part of the Tri-Cities Legislative Council. In fact, we've got the trip on the twenty-second of February to Olympia. And right now, there's five people from the Pasco Chamber signed up to participate in that. And I can't say that I just bought a house in Pasco, so I will be the sixth person on that delegation heading to Olympia that lives in Pasco. And so again, I just want to introduce myself, and hopefully I'll get a chance to meet all of you and talk with you each individually in the near future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Good evening, council, my name is Stephen Bowman. I live here in Pasco, and I'd like to share some information with you. So as a developer here in Pasco, I'd like you to look on the front page. And the reason I'm before you tonight is the first line under that Pasco municipal code. It says cul-de-sacs will be permitted where topography or other conditions justify their use. If you look at the next page, it's a site map of a project that I'm doing. The next page is the proposal that I had and that I asked for that is permitted by Pasco municipal code where topography or other conditions justify their use. And the last page is the permitted subdivisions that I have today. The reason my client did not want the permitted, the permitted plan that we have is because the second to last page provides the opportunity for those families that will live in those homes to back into a cul-de-sac, and it's a safety issue. We were not allowed to use the plan that we wanted because the safety that we were concerned with was not a condition that justified doing it the way that we, private developers, wanted to do it. So the last page is the permitted cul-de-sacs that we have today. Still a cul-de-sac, it's not quite as deep. It actually provided us one additional lot per subdivision, but that was not the primary concern of my client. Primary concern of my client was safety. So the lots that we're going to be building on in each of those two subdivisions, eight of those lots have to back into through traffic. I'm here to ask if there could be some direction, or at least an opportunity for the opportunity, or for the answer to not just be no, now what's your question? But when we, when we have a concern, in this case, safety, that we believe justified the use, we still have a cul-de-sac, it's just slightly, slightly different depth, and that's my concern. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. We'll follow up with staff on that and get some clarity on the basis for that. Do we have any additional comments? Yeah, come on down.
Hello. Hi, I'm Caitlin Ashford, I'm from Kennewick, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Cities around the nation have passed resolutions regarding the Israeli-Palestine conflict, including here in Washington, Seattle with a resolution for ceasefire, and recently in Spokane with a resolution asking for a lasting peace in the conflict. The International Court of Justice has also recently found sufficient evidence to let a case go to international trial on the question of genocide in Gaza conducted by Israel against the Palestinian people. In Pasco, over eighty thousand dollars in the form of federal taxes go to support the Israeli military each year. I'm just here tonight to ask the city council to please discuss issuing a similar resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in the conflict and issue a resolution condemning the Israeli occupation apartheid and genocide against the Palestinian people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Mr. Bowman.
Sorry, I think I had a couple of seconds left, I forgot to ask. I would like a response for, I was before you three weeks ago with a question and a request, and I would like a response from you or from staff from that, please, that would be much appreciated, thank you.
I'll be honest, I don't recall that request. Mr. Ling, can you have a note, or Mr. Dow?
We, we can reach out to Mr. Bowman and check up on that, I cannot recall off the top of my head at this point.
Okay. Yeah. All right, Mr. Bowman, cool. Thank you. Any additional comments going twice? And any additional comments going a third time? Oh. Well, no, it's not open for, there's no second round. No, his was just simply requesting a follow-up on a follow-up. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and close public comments and move on to item seven, which is reports from committees or inter-officers, and this is the opportunity for council members to provide verbal reports of their on-goings. Councilmember Grimm, and then Ms. Blaisdell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it was a busy couple of weeks since I saw you last time. I attended the Pasco Chamber of Commerce meeting. I also went to a homeowners association meeting out at Tierra Vida, where one of our Pasco police officers, Division District One Officer Mitchell, gave a, really a nice presentation about just protecting the community from crime and graffiti and how to, what the processes for getting rid of it. And a lot of it was translated into Spanish, and the Ask Pasco app was brought up, and Captain Paramore was also there and helping answer some of those questions, so that was really good. Also, councilmember Paralis and I met as a subcommittee over water rights, and in coming days, we will debrief with you and the city manager about that meeting and go forward from there. And I think it was a good step in the right direction, and last but not least, I won't talk about it all the time here, but Mr. Zuckerberg reminded me that in the last couple of weeks that this was my five-year anniversary down serving at the Union Gospel Mission. So I'm down there every Tuesday, working with the homeless men down there, and I just passed five years, so, thank you.
Nice, thank you for your commitment to the community, Ms. Blaisdell.
I attended the visit Tri-Cities meeting, the first meeting of the year. There was quite a few of us new board members that attended. They announced that they have a different refined vision and mission statement. Their new vision is inspire, reward, and celebrate the spirit of exploration and discovery. And the mission is fuel transformational growth in the Tri-Cities through tourism. They're going to be focusing this year strategic sales and then also effective marketing. So they will be here, I believe, to give their twenty-twenty-three annual report to council on March twenty-fifth at seven, so, looking forward to that report.
Thank you, Ms. Blaisdell, Mr. Pross.
It's on now, thank you, Mayor. Oh, no, I just wanted to report on the Hapo Center advisory board meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. We've kind of had a, haven't had a meeting since then. Essentially, we just kind of kicked off essentially what the vision and mission is going to be for the Hapo Center and what we want to do as a body. They did talk about some upgrades they are making or looking to make. Harris White Leisure gave their, I would say abbreviated master plan, but they're looking to the county and this body to come up with what we envisioned the Hapo Center to be. Other than that, it looks like we're gonna be having some talks here soon. Myself and councilmember Blaisdell with county commissioners, and so we're looking forward to bringing you guys back information so that we can start really thinking about what we, what role we want with the Hapo Center, thank you.
Thank you. No. Okay. Seeing no more lights, I will speak for myself and Ms. Barajas. Well, technically not in our official capacities, we had the opportunity to head down to Boys and Girls Club to judge the youth of the year, youth of the year competition. And while that kind of sounds weird of judging youth, it was a tremendous experience for me. I really appreciated, there were three finalists, one from Prosser, one from Kennewick, and one from here. And I would like to say that Ms. Zaida won, the, from the Kennewick clubhouse, she won the youth of the year. All three of these students, individuals, I guess, whatever, were extremely impressive, you know? These are tenth, eleventh, and I think one was a senior, so tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. All who were overcoming some sort of, you know, social issue or whatever the case was to present to a board of unknown strangers, myself included. You know, people who are obviously much more mature in age, not necessarily in true maturity. And for, speaking for myself, but, you know, it was impressive to see these kids. They were phenomenal, and to participate in that. And of course, I say that, you know, as we're about to dovetail into our single item, which is the ARPA funding. I will say it was, it was definitely, those kids were very impressive. So for all three, you, if you're listening, each one of you did well. Each one of you had tremendous personal assets and showcased some very strong fortitude. And I encourage each one of them to come back next year to the extent they're available. Again, I apologize, Ms. Darcy. We are now rolling into the financial and the American Rescue Plan Act updates, which is the ARPA updates, and I know Boys and Girls Club make a play in that or have had a request in that. And I know that they're gonna, I believe, present to us, I think, next week, if that's what I have. But maybe that's news to you. But for now, let's talk about what we're looking to do with the ARPA funds.
Okay, that sounds good. Good evening, Mayor and council members, I have two items that kind of nicely go together, so there's two separate presentations. First about just a quick municipal finance update, and we are at the beginning of the year, which historically is a time that finance is very busy closing the prior year, and it takes us some time. We have a couple of steps that we need to go through that, some of which just are the passage of time to make sure that we get all twenty-twenty-three revenues and expenses recognized in the correct year, even though they may be received by the city or paid by the city in twenty-twenty-four. So that takes us a little while, and because of that, we are going a little different direction in this presentation than we typically do, because we have not closed twenty-twenty-three, and so our numbers that we would present to you right now are still influx a little bit. As you saw in your agenda packet, we put together a handout that's serving as a document, as reference material related to municipal finance for you to use when you're looking for an answer or have a question, and we look at that to be a living document where we're able to go update it and change it as we go through the year, and hopefully eventually put it on the webpage. So if people have questions or want to know why sometimes we do what we do, or what a fund is, or what our policies are, that there's a resource for them as well. So I'll get started on the presentation, this part is pretty quick, we'll spend probably more time on ARPA. But the city is guided by many different accounting requirements or best practices. We follow generally accepted accounting principles, and there is a governmental accounting standards board that issues pronouncements and framework for the work that we do in finance, and that affects everyone at the city, all the departments go on that trip with us, and we're thankful for their following our guide, the rules and print policies and procedures that finance shares. We are also, of course, governed by the state of Washington, that we are audited by the state auditor's office, and they do supply a document that provides coding and different directions of how we account for things. And it's dubbed the bars, but budget, accounting, and recording system. And then, of course, there's other state and federal standards that's tied off into what type of money we receive. If it's a federal money for a transportation project, we have to account for that in a certain way, and there's various elements. Go to this next slide. And as I touched on real quickly earlier, or maybe not so quickly, but I'll touch on it real quickly now, we do have various steps that we're doing and walking through here at the beginning of the year. We recognize all the expenses for goods and services received in twenty-three. We, after that, have to make sure that we get all loans and grants billed for the right period, and then reconciling bank accounts and other accounts. And all of this is flowing in kind of a stacked fashion, so it takes us a little while. But finally, we have made all our entries, and we're able to provide financial statements that move to the state auditor's office around mid-April. And historically, and you could see it in your packet, we provide a revenue manual update, and so that revenue manual has, is focused on the general fund, and there's charts for the past few years and this year, an estimate to close the biennium, and finally, our budget. For tonight, I did not put all those in the presentation, but we did, instead, the items that are significant in value or where there might be a little difference between budget and where we are mid-biennium, we're going to look at those real quickly too. Of course, you know, property tax is a significant revenue source to the city. We did increase property tax by one percent for twenty-twenty-four. And you can see, and I'll outline real quick, the blue columns are for actuals over the past bienniums. And then orange is an estimated actual for twenty-twenty-three. And while we're making those final entries, it's still estimated. And then the yellow is what we estimate will occur in twenty-twenty-four. So comparing that combination of orange and yellow to the green column, we can kind of see how close we think we'll be to budget. It looks like we're on the right path to meet our budgeted revenues for property taxes. And then, of course, and it's in the agenda report also, but this represents the tax that Pasco receives from property taxes. But when citizens pay their property taxes, those revenues are split among the different taxing districts that are spread out there or detailed there. And Pasco receives about, well, fifteen and a half percent of that total. And then sales tax is a significant support to the general fund. And of course, similar to property taxes, there's many taxing jurisdictions that receive funds when sales tax is paid. That receive funds when sales tax is paid. And we have, as you know, we've was, as we've worked through twenty twenty-three, we are short. In comparison, in comparing, excuse me, uh revenues received versus what we thought they may have been. At different times during the buy, the, well, the first year of the biennium. Um and those, we are going to continue to uh. Review and share with council. Primarily, that shortfall is related to construction sales tax for some large-scale construction projects. That continue. And so we expect that um revenues will um be at least as high as they were in twenty twenty-three. Um but I'll be bringing that information back to you as we go through the years or the months of this year. And then utility tax is uh a tax that is passed on to ser- utility service providers, uh tax on their revenues. And so you can see that long list of um different taxing, or excuse me, different utilities. A few of them are city utilities and and we pay the tax as well. Um and the majority of the funding. Uh is provided to the general fund with a small percentage moving to help support street overlay and streets funds. And on this chart, you, uh one night notable item is that it looks like it's, that we have a potential of receiving more revenue. Than we budgeted. Um one part of that equation or why that could be is um. Both water and electric utilities, well, all of the you, the tax, of course, is dependent on revenues. But those utilities where heat uh may make consumption higher and therefore revenue higher. That uh affects the utility tax that comes to the city. Um I think this is my final slide related to the revenue items that are significant to general fund. Um and it's building permit revenue. We have uh addressed that as we've gone through the year and known that it's been lower than budgeted. It's uh tied, we believe, primarily, well, I know, primarily to single-family dwelling units. Um but uh interest rates and economic uncertainty uh for twenty twenty-three, certainly, this is where I believe. Uh had an effect on that. So as we moved into twenty twenty-four, uh we do have an expectation that interest rates will improve. And so that may be beneficial towards twenty twenty-four permit issuances. And also, uh we are aware of the pending development that also may uh result in more building permits being issued. So um in closing, we've gone through all the, so a sm- a snippet of the revenues that are important to the general fund. Um and we'll come back to to address those with you as the uh actuals are reported in twenty twenty-four. Um and it's always, of course, important that we compare revenues and expenses to make sure that we're able to make wise decisions moving forward. And um uh as you have an opportunities to review the revenue manual. And the new financial information kind of question and answer style. And you have questions or comments, we're surely. Uh desirous to hear those so that that information can be beneficial and helpful. And if you have any questions, now is a good time.
Mr. Proust.
Thank you, Mayor. Um based on past forecasts, do you think we should tighten our belt on some of our expenses? For this, the end of this, you know, biennium? Or is this, you know, typical from what you've seen over the last couple of bienniums?
Well, the, I will say that over the past couple of bienniums, things have not especially been typical. Um partially thanks to COVID, we've kind of, if you look at the years, um both revenues and expenses have dealt with quite a few variables. Um there were times when we anticipated that revenues, especially in the sales tax area, area would slow way down. Um and it, that didn't happen. Um as far as the budget and and expenses, we do meet monthly with departments. And we look at where they are uh in spending and compared to their budget. And definitely compare that to revenues, just as I mentioned before. So we are cautious and careful in our spending. And as we progress into twenty twenty-four, we'll start doing our budgeting and planning for twenty, the next biennium. And that also will help us kind of make some wise decisions about um cash flow. Uh what spending needs to occur in the next biennium and and where we make decisions to um spend. See it city resources.
Thank you. Uh anyone else? Seeing none, I think I'll just uh echo what Mr. Proust says, you know, obviously keep us surprised if things need to tighten or be trimmed. Um so we're not caught off guard as always. But I, I will note that uh, and you said this out loud, you know, that fifteen percent of the. Of the property tax is what Pasco owns, you know? When folks say my property tax went up, just remember, only fifteen percent of that comes back here. Over forty percent of that was the school district and other entities. So the ability for this entity, the city of Pasco, to impact your property tax is very insignificant. At best, it is um, you know, what, one-eighth basically of the total sum of your property taxes. So I know that's a a hot issue, especially when the economy is where it is right now. Um where inflation is is crippling people. Um but again, the city of Pasco has very limited impact. On your dollar cost of property taxes. Um so I just, I appreciate you putting that out there and I wanted to reiterate it for the public.
Thank you.
To your next one.
We will next move on to ARPA. Uh it's been a little while since we've had an ARPA update. And so we certainly wanted to come back and share information with council and the public. Um as you know, the ARPA stands for the American Rescue Plan Act. Um and for various reasons, and they're outlined there, and I won't go through each of them. But the dollars that were provided to the city and all everyone who received ARPA money. Uh was uh dictated to be spent or that the purpose was to be spent for uh specific elements. And the probably the ones that people know the best and how the city has used that money. Is uh related to responding to public health and negative economic impacts on the pan- of the pandemic, I'm sorry. Um and then also providing government-type services related to revenue loss due to the pandemic. Um one thing to point out, and we uh, the words that came with the ARPA plan, that the purpose of spending money. Uh and the way we could spend the money was very challenging in that federal funding is highly regulated. Um and so even though the funding was through ARPA provided to the city, we've not, we also still needed to make sure that we. Requ- uh met the requirements of federal funding. And so um that that was definitely kept us on our toes. As we worked with council on programs that did, met both requirements. Um so uh completed programs. Uh we had a program for utility assistance. Um and this program, as you can see, uh there was a little bit of money left over that didn't get distributed. And we will use that in a different program. But by and large, all the funds, almost one point one six million dollars. Was used by a combination of Franklin P O D, City of Pasco and basing disposal. To assist customers who are affected by the pandemic and were delinquent in their utility bills. Um approximately one thousand five hundred and twenty customers, is a little different depending on which utility that you looked at. But benefited from the grants, um and were able to have their utility bills paid with grant money. Um you know, the business assistant program was a collaborative event or collaborative affair. Between the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Pasco. Chamber of Commerce uh was our sub-recipient. And they completed uh uh collaboration with uh applicants. And verified revenue loss and um made sure that the people that were provided up to thirty thousand dollars of a grant. Um met the requirements of the program. And uh there were a hundred and seventy-seven applicants. Eighty-six were successful in uh met, in meeting their program requirements. And uh one good fact of that was of the businesses that were a benefit of the grant or of the grant program. They had employees of approximately, well, it's two hundred and sixty-seven point five. So apparently someone was working less than full-time, but um but that was almost two million dollars. That went out based on that program. Um we have a handful of programs that are in process right now and have been um ongoing for some time. The Pasco Resource Navigator Program is a behavioral health, behavioral health specialist team. That uh coordinates with emergency services and focuses on crisis intervention and care for the community. Um the dollars allocated to that program are six hundred and twenty-five thousand, and they've spent a hundred and forty-eight. Uh community resource specialist, uh this position was started with the receipt of ARPA funds. And it is a staff member who has helped throughout the pros- process uh to deliver uh assistance. And public outreach and also helps administrate the program and the reporting. Um and then there's a training uh opportunity for people that apply to WSU workforce training. And it is tailored towards um uh financial guidance and business uh uh training for small businesses. Uh other items are the downtown area planning. As you know, we have a downtown master plan. And um that plan uh is being, our hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money is dedicated to helping implement that plan. Including uh outdoor eateries. The Pasco Specialty Kitchen, uh we are uh in the midst of. Uh making equipment and facility, uh equipment purchases and facility improvements. Uh there's five hundred thousand dollars allocated and they're just a little over halfway through that spending. Um uh the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center renovation, uh we have funding uh from ARPA that we've dedicated to this project. And then also there is uh federal and state funding uh that will pair with the two and a half million dollars. Uh for the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center. And then at the bottom and nearly complete and maybe complete, um there's a little time lag between recognition of dollars spent. And and um the creation of this presentation. But we have completed water infrastructure improvements to the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant. And that benefits all ratepayers. As um you all are aware, the expenses of a utility are borne. Uh without a grant, uh they all, all expenses uh um are considered. Or uh calculated to over a set of years. Uh we have a rate study. And there are expenses and revenues that are put in the rate study. And all expenses must be recovered by uh the rates that are set. So when the utility did not spend nine million dollars uh for these capital improvements and instead used ARPA money. That is nine million dollars that ratepayers did not have to pay. Uh for a summary, uh we are at uh, our total ARPA funds were about seventeen and a half million dollars. Uh we've spent almost twelve million and we have sixteen million allocated. Um we have a little bit of unallocated funding and some money that, as I noted, there's been some underspending on closed proj- projects. So that is available. And so uh the money that we have from ARPA available to allocate is one. Million four hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred and forty dollars. And you'll note, there's a little star or asterisk there about. Uh next to the available to allocate. At one point in time, and this was mentioned, um a potential project for ARPA funding. Or using ARPA funding was uh related to improvements at the Boys and Girls Club. Um and that request was one point two six million dollars at this point in time. And I believe with council direction. Uh those funds have been reallocated um to be earmarked for the Martin Luther King Center improvements. Um and that is. Oh, I have, this is important, too, I'm sorry. Um uh it was mentioned by a guest speaker. That ARPA funds must be spent or obligated by the end of this year. And obligated means in under contract. Um sometimes we obligated is not quite as um, or that definition of obligated is not as set in stone. As we are in a guaranteed um payment arrangement. But for ARPA funds, we need to be under contract. And and or have spent the money. Um if we are under contract, then we have two more years until we have to actually spend the money. So we're working towards getting all the items that I discussed obligated by the end of the year. And um at this point in time, that's the conclusion of my presentation. And we can field questions or comments.
Thank you, Darcy. Uh Ms. Proust.
Thank you, uh Mayor. Just a quick question, not sure if this question is for you or Adam. Um in regards to the uh Pasco Resource Navigator, is that um, or and and actually the Community Resource Specialist? Are these positions, excuse me, are these positions staff within the City of Pasco or staff associated uh to other agencies? For example, um there's a a gal at the courthouse, Pamela? Oh, she's our employee. Okay. So she would be the community resource?
She actually is funded through a different grant program.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Just wanted to get clarification on those positions. These are great uh individuals. The um the work that they're doing in the community, Pamela specifically, is is just tremendous. In connecting uh community uh individuals that need connection to housing, um clothing, food. Um medical services. Um so I, this is, this is, it's great that we have these funds for for these two individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Proust. Mr. Roster.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh Ms. Buckley, on the completed program slide. Um one of the categories was utility assistance. I think you, there was one thousand five hundred and twenty customers. I think you mentioned this, for those impacted by the pandemic, you know, negatively in a, in a financial sense. Did folks need to apply for those funds or were they, okay?
Yeah.
I wondered if they needed to apply for it was automatic.
No, they had to apply for the funds.
And then uh the second to last slide, the Boys and Girls Club, are those improvements on pause until more funds become available? The ones that were redirected to the MLK Center or?
That would be a decision we would need the Boys and Girls Club to come and talk to uh council and staff. Uh right now, they're not, those improvements are not part of the ARPA program. And our intention is, our expectation is. That those funds would be spent for the Martin Luther King Center. And so we would not have any other, any funds left um to, to help assist.
I I can add to that uh just a little bit more. Um part of this funding that was requested from the city. There are additional funds from other entities, private and uh governmental funds. Uh that uh Boys and Girls Club has acquired. Uh but at this point, the project is on hold. Um as uh we're discussing where we uh, we have discussed where uh the ARPA funds uh from the city would be allocated at. So we are um discussing with Boys and Girls Club in terms of what their path forward is. But at this point, it is, the project is on pause.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proust.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I just wanted to clarification. So on that fund summary page, it says one point four million dollars. But are you saying then that money, like, so one point two six is allocated, so there's only about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars? Available if they end up allocating that one point two six?
One point two six. Oh, well, the unallocated funds is our, actually, though. If we allocated the one point two six, um it would just draw down that available to allocate by. Um so there'd be two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of there, yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, that's there. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes. And we do, while it's not specifically allocated to Martin Luther King Center, that is the plan at this time.
Thank you.
With council direction.
Thank you, Mr. Proust. Anyone else?
Uh if not, I've got a couple of questions. Um so turning to that unallocated point, it's targeted right now for the MLK Center. Are we going to be able to obligate that within a timely fashion?
We have talked about that. And our plan is that it will be a uh effort between finance and public works. And um if uh administrative and community services to look at the project and see how we, we might have to phase the project. administrative and community services to look at the project and see how we, we might have to phase the project to see how we best get that done. As was noted before, we have funding from federal funds and state funds. And so we will definitely spend the ARPA funding first and we can look at the project and see how best to do that and, and might have to break up design work and construction work to, to get the, the funding spent from ARPA first. And well obligated, excuse me, but under contract.
Okay, I, I think one of my comments here, and I know I've honest, I will flat out admit, I have flip flopped between Boys and Girls Club and um between the MLK Center, both being city-owned facilities, right? Um, so I want to caveat it there. You know, again, in, in doing the judging uh of the youth of the year this past week, one of the comments that I had from, I think his name is Brian Ace, the director, uh, was some of their fundings contingent on them receiving some funds from Pasco. Now, I, I don't know how well that's been communicated and it sounded like they had anticipated trying to get on a future slate, you know, for uh, for our um workshop meeting to present to council. I think my concern here is obviously every day that goes by, the quicker we're gonna have to allocate or, or um take the word, yeah, obligate the money. Um, and so whether it's for MLK or whether it's for Boys and Girls Club, I think, you know, certainly, again, we've kind of directed and swerved uh between these two projects. I, I hope we can stick the landing on one. Um, and certainly I know we've talked about those federal funds as well as the state funds that we intend to receive uh somewhat through this package that we would see, I guess in March, by the time our state legislature closes, if I recall, we had some, some asks out of Olympia, right?
We've, we've already been provided uh an amount and I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but this, this year, no, there's not an additional ask.
Okay, and, but that amount was that it all contingent on allocating these funds or obligating these funds is maybe the term?
I, I think that the federal and state partners are looking for um this city to be an active participant, but I don't think there was a specific dollar amount.
Okay, uh, I just, again, I think I'll circle back to, because both these projects have city ownership. I, I think from my perspective, this is me speaking, um, I'm open to, to obligating the funds on the either project. I think what they, they will both serve underserved people in our community. Um, I was, I don't know if saddened or impressed by the number of kids that eat at um Boys and Girls Club, sometimes all three meals. Um, that was uh a much higher number than I expected. Regardless, you know, to the public, this, these ARPA funds that are going to one of these two projects will serve our community. Uh, they will provide resources that are desperately needed for these folks. Um, again, I, I, I'm hoping that Boys and Girls Club, they had indicated they were trying to get on uh one of our meetings. Um, if they've not reached out, then that's clearly their miss.
We, we do meet with Mr. Ace pretty regularly, so we can follow up with him too and just see what his, his path forward he'd like to take.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, again, if, if their money's contingent on receiving monies from us, that, that and that's not clearly been articulated, that would be a huge benefit to this body. So without taking too much time on that, um, that's just my opinion. So I appreciate everything that you've provided, Ms. Darcy, Ms. Buckley.
Thank you.
With no further lights on, we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there to, non-listed. Item nine, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, non-listed. On to ten, unfinished business, not seeing the city manager's light light up. We'll move on to number eleven, new business, also not seeing his light light up. Or anyone else to my right. Uh, miscellaneous discussion, do we have anything from either council? Uh, Mr. Lincoln?
Sorry, I got the light on that time.
Right.
Okay, I, I think there's a, an, an update or two from uh, uh, Mr. Jacob Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening, um, Mayor and members of council. We just wanted to share some really exciting news. Um, in late September of twenty twenty three, staff was approached by a local application, um, a local development uh team to pursue funding from the Washington State Department of Commerce to fund uh much-needed affordable housing in the city of Pasco. And um, uh, this is, uh, we were notified uh mid-last week that the Washington State Department of Commerce uh did in fact um think highly of the proposal. So the city of Pasco and the development team was rewarded with a two million dollar reimbursable grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce to help cover the uh infrastructure costs related to construction of a multifamily project located uh just east of Heritage Boulevard on A Street with the, really the, a lot of support from uh our local development and contracting community. So really just wanted to share the, the great news with council. Uh, the uh project will consist of approximately a hundred and twenty units with about twenty-five percent of them reserved for um households of low income, uh needing the much-needed gap um that our community members have with uh meeting their housing needs. So just wanted to share the really great news, uh, the two million dollar reimbursable grant is the highest amount you can win. I mean, I think it's a relatively new program associated with commerce's connecting housing to infrastructure program. So just wanted to share the, the great news with council and I think demonstrates a, a pretty significant partnership with our uh local development uh community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you chasing those monies.
Uh, seeing nothing else from Mr. Lincoln, Mr. Brawls.
Thank you, Mayor. I, yeah, I just had a couple of things for miscellaneous discussion. Yeah, I was really taken by um the presentation by um Mr. Lehman in regards to that sign code. And uh, you know, I, I talked a lot about this, he always bring it up campaign, but you know, I was talking about lots of stuff. Um, in regards to signage and how it would help out businesses in our community. And so I, I really do think we should look into this and, and move on it or at least explore it. Uh, bring something to the council so that perhaps we can move on it. Um, I'm not looking for uh a, any, anyone to do that tonight, maybe we can talk about it, get some guidance from staff. But I think we need to move on this. I think we need to be assisting businesses and getting people to businesses. As you saw earlier, you know, sales tax is not reaching that budget. Um, I think we should do what we can to get people into, you know, into our small businesses. So I, I think we should be looking into it and I, and I do believe he's been um trying to do this since COVID. Um, so, you know, uh, I know we waited a long time for murals. So I, hopefully we just take a different tone and tact and we start moving on stuff a little bit faster rather than going really slow. So um, I'll go ahead and talk about the case studies. I think Mr. Baumann was speaking about this, he came a couple of weeks ago. Um, and so, yeah, I looked into it, I read up on it, so I think that's the response that he wanted to hear. And I really do think we should look into some of these things that Mr. Baumann and, I mean, he's represented probably other developers, um, issues that they have. So I would like to see this stuff, type of stuff, um, talked about in council meetings, transparency. Um, you know, again, if, if we're allowed to do cul-de-sacs based on our code, then why aren't we, why aren't we doing it? Um, and just give us some background. Uh, I don't know if that's something, if a developer in the city tells you eye to eye on something, if I, there used to be, and I mentioned before, a Columbia, um, like buildings, uh, buildings commission um between all the cities with BF COG was oversaw that. So I don't know if that's something that perhaps once that's up and running, they um, you know, work with the applicant and on behalf of the cities. I, I don't know, but I just think, I think cul-de-sacs are cool. You know, I think we should have a plethora of different housing, um, development and um I'd be for that. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to briefly talk about the DPDA audit. Um, you know, to say the least, it was pretty horrific. Um, you know, you get told certain numbers over the years and a lot of things have came out. And so I don't want to speak too much about it tonight because we're gonna talk about it at length next week. But, you know, I, I think it's really incumbent on us as a council and as a city, when we hear things about nonprofits that we oversee or provide funding, or we provide funding to certain nonprofits that these nonprofits are doing things by the letter of the law. And, and when we hear things, we need to vet it. Um, I mean, this has been going on for a long time before, you know, when I was sitting over there and to here, I just think, you know, it makes us look bad. Um, people talk about black eyes, another black eye. Well, I mean, I think it's time that we, especially in regards to DPDA, we start kind of issuing some black eyes. Uh, I mean, three hundred thousand dollars plus, um, if you count the, the COVID money, mismanagement of funds. I, I really think we need to figure out what's going on with this and bring people to justice so that the community knows that we're taking this stuff seriously. But year after year, we see losses from many events. Again, that's, that uh DPDA is defunct, but I, I think we really need to come together and really figure this out and, and and it's, it's, I'm torn because I want to see a DPDA or something like it in downtown. And I feel like the downtown is getting shorter now because of the leadership that was there over a number of years. And so now we're not gonna have anything there to assist those businesses and to drive more downtown development. So I, I think we have a lot of discussion going forward, but I just wanted to uh provide some comment about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brawls, uh, Mr. Milne.
Oh, I think Mr. uh Councilman Brawls took away a lot of my thunder. I was also gonna mention the Meadows Outdoor Advertising. I'm for that. I think we should be better discussion on that. Um, so we could talk to staff with, see if, I don't know if it could be put on the agenda or a workshop, but I would like to have a better discussion on that. And then, yeah, the DPDA, I've had a couple of calls, very disappointed as well. Um, yeah, I, I really can't add too much more what Mr. uh Councilman Brawls has said, but uh it's very frustrating when these things happen, especially when you find out that people are cheating other neighbors and the money's supposed to be helping the downtown, yet they're doing it for other reasons. So anyway, just very disappointed, but uh hopefully uh we could come to something better and hopefully those people that are uh doing this could be held accountable. Again, very, very upsetting to, to read it and yeah, I, again, really can't say too much more, but uh very disappointed for that way.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Lehman, thank you for your presentation. I echo my fellow council members' point about, um, you know, getting on this. And as a small business owner and having others up here too, I know that's near and dear, but at the same time, um, you know, I'd like to he- hear what the public has to say about it too and, you know, have it go through the hearing examiner or whatever process that is that allows the public to have input on it too. And as far as the other subject, I'll um keep those comments until next week when it's in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grim, Mr. Harpser.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was just gonna mention, I think a lot of these items would be great to discuss at our council retreat in the next month. Um, as we kind of work through determining our priorities and um what we want to tackle.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else? Uh, well, with that, I, I do echo the sentiment that we have some things before us. Uh, they can be discussed both at workshop meetings as well as in our retreat to determine what the level of priority council gives it. So I, I think over the next month, we're both gonna set some goals and priorities as well as um have some meetings um with the public, so it'll be a fun time. Stay tuned for the next month. With that, uh, we have no need for item number thirteen, executive session. Okay, I just, I'd pause just in case. Um, then with that, we are going to be adjourned. It is eight twenty, well, might as well roll it over to eight twenty-three. Thank you. Have a great night.